Let's get underway. Call this meeting to order. Madam Clerk, would you please do the roll call?
Councilmember Engler.
Here.
Councilmember Newman.
Here.
Councilmember Taylor.
Here.
Councilmember, excuse me, Mayor Protem Adam.
Here.
And Mayor McNamee.
Here. Let's all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
The Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. At the outset, I'd like to welcome and thank the many city, county, and state elected officials who are here this evening and/or their representatives. We have many, many mayors, board commissioners, committee members who are here in the audience tonight, and I would like to extend my sincere thank you for being here as we do the reorganization meeting. We have a special presentation today. I'm going to walk over to the podium, and we'll proceed at that point. There we go. In 1984, the City of Thousand Oaks initiated its annual council seat dedication program, recognizing city residents who have demonstrated outstanding service to our community. This evening, the City Council is pleased to honor this year's seat dedication recipient, Mr. Rick Lemo. Big hand for him. We are so delighted to be able to welcome Mr. Lemo to our meeting tonight. Rick, would you please join me at the podium? Come on down. Thousand Oaks is very fortunate to have a vast pool of residents who are deeply involved in our community. Some support our arts and cultural programs, some volunteer with local philanthropic organizations, some support education or youth sports, and some take the time to advise council on important issues facing the city. Rick Lemo is one of these rare people who managed to serve Thousand Oaks in every one of these capacities. Rick and his wife of nearly forty-eight years, she's a saint, she's a saint. Luann have lived in Thousand Oaks since 1986, where they raised their three sons, Nick, Richard, and Zach, and where Rick has spent much of his professional career and personal time serving the community. Rick is well-known as the Senior Vice President of Caruso Affiliated, a position which allowed him to serve as liaison between his company and the local nonprofit organizations, key community members, elected officials, and city staff. What you may not know is that early in his career, Rick worked, say that two times, Rick worked as the general manager for the local radio station Light 92.7, wait a minute, Light 92.7, where he not only built a successful popular radio station in the Caneo Valley, but also used his position to host fundraisers that supported programs like Mini Mansions and Dare. Rick's philanthropic and community work since those early days has touched nearly every corner of our city. Many of you know Rick through the sixteen years he's served as a member of the Thousand Oaks Traffic Commission. Rick used his time on the Traffic Commission to build strong connections. Join me over here, Rick, so that way they can see you on TV. With our incredible, well, you've got the face made for radio.
So true.
Build strong connections with our incredible city staff and to help bring cutting-edge ideas to our city's traffic planning, such as flashing yellow turn signals. One of the many things that makes Rick an outstanding recipient of this year's seat dedication is that he doesn't just participate, he leads. Rick served as former member of the Board of Regents for the California Lutheran University and past chair and current board member of the Los Robles Regional Medical Center. He has been the president of the Thousand Oaks Boulevard Association and vice president of the Thousand Oaks Boulevard Business Improvement District, and he is Chair Emeritus of the Greater Caneo Valley Regional Chamber of Commerce. Rick is also the former president of the American Heart Association, past president of the Thousand Oaks Rotary Club, legacy founder of the T.O. Arts, president of the Dos Fiantos Home Owners Association, and for fourteen years was an officer and coach of the Newberry Park Baseball Association, Basketball Association, and AYSO. Given his warm and affable personality, oh, whoever wrote this stick, Rick, I tell you, I'm sure the kids on each of his teams feel lucky to be able to call him Coach. Rick has received numerous awards for achievement in business and community service, including the 1999 Business Person of the Year Award for the Caneo Valley Chamber of Commerce, the 1999 Rotarian of the Year Award from the Thousand Oaks Rotary Club, the 2006-2007 Man of the Year from the Greater Caneo Valley Chamber of Commerce, and the 2013 Caruso Dedicated and Distinguished Service Award. For each of these contributions, as well as for those that we are certain are to come, on behalf of the entire City Council, I am pleased to be able to dedicate Seat P10 for Mr. Rick Lemo. On behalf of the City Council, we'd like to present to you the certificate, and we ask for a few words from a man who has done so much for the city with our deepest gratitude. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor, City Council, city management. Well, I think, I thought about what I wanted to say tonight, and I wanted to start out with, I'm very fortunate that when we moved here from back east, I literally fell in love with this city. I've been fortunate enough to have some phenomenal mentors, most especially, I think I would have to say Grant Brimhall, Chuck Cohen, and of course, Virginia Davis, who's no longer with us, and Councilmember Alex Fiore, and also Councilmember Andy Fox, but also some great staff mentors. We have a remarkable city manager, and I have to mention that while all of our entire staff is remarkable, many a time did Hader Alawami have to smack me in the back of the head and say, "Wait a minute, what you're trying to do here doesn't make sense." And so I'm very grateful for that. This volunteer work that I have done is replicated by so many people in this city, which makes it, you know, many hands make light work. But the one person who really deserves a lot of credit is the person who I'm married to for forty, almost forty-eight years. I think she's actually numb now. She puts up with a lot and really, you know, had a major hand in making sure that things were right at home. And so this is one of those things where, you know, I'm glad that my family can be here tonight. I'm very grateful for my sons and my wife being here, but I'm exceptionally grateful for my oldest granddaughter being here and feel very, very lucky. And so this is an honor that I don't know that I really deserve, but I'm very grateful to have received it, and I thank you very much for that.
Rick, I...
Stay still.
As you just heard from Rick, he has acknowledged the people who mentored him to be the wonderful service to the city that he has been. But also, Rick has in turn done that for others. He has been a mentor for many, many leaders in our community, and Rick is very modest in that regard, and I thank him very much for doing that. And Rick, I'd like to say that one of the things I've learned in husband school is always acknowledge the spouse. You did well, thank you very much. With that, Council, would you please come on in front for a photographic opportunity we have with Mr. Lemo? And it is now time for the 2023 Council Reorganization. I will, with my pleasure, turn the meeting over to our city clerk to conduct the nomination selection for both mayor and mayor pro tem. Oh, you get to say things about me?
Yeah.
I'm on the wrong page. Oh, okay.
You're to remain at the dais, Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Please.
Councilmember, I'm turning it over to you, Mayor Protem.
Thank you, Mayor, thank you. And as is our custom, we have a number of guests here this evening that would like to honor our mayor. And our first guest is representing Congresswoman Julia Brownlee, and that would be Anthony Avila. Anthony, come on down.
So, thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight, and good evening. My name is Anthony Avila, and on behalf of Congresswoman Julia Brownlee, I would like to recognize Mayor McNamee for his leadership and contributions to the City of Thousand Oaks and its residents and his role as mayor. Congresswoman Brownlee has often said it is her greatest privilege to represent the people of California's 26th Congressional District, which includes the wonderful City of Thousand Oaks. She has worked closely with Mayor McNamee and the entire City Council to move our community forward and to do all that she can in partnership with all of you to improve the lives of people who call Thousand Oaks home. One noteworthy example of this work is the microgrid installation for the municipal service center at Caneo Center Drive and Rancho Caneo Boulevard. Congresswoman Brownlee was proud to secure almost $2 million for this important investment in the city's infrastructure and in this battery energy storage system. This project will build resilience and ensure essential city services can continue to function in the event that power is cut off, whether from a wildfire, public safety power shut off, or earthquake. The Congresswoman extends her sincere appreciation to Mayor McNamee for his steadfast commitment and service to the residents of Thousand Oaks, and she looks forward to continuing to work with him, the incoming mayor, and the entire council to best serve the residents of this great city. For his contributions to the city, I am pleased to present Mayor McNamee with a certificate of congressional...
to working together, as I'm sure you're not going very far. So on behalf of Assemblymember Erwin, want to present you with a certificate of recognition from the State Assembly. Congratulations and thank you for your service.
Thank you so much.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
We will do the one clap. Remember that? That was, I never heard that before.
We did that very well, didn't we? Yes.
We can multiple clapping tonight, it's fine.
Those that weren't here there at the event have no idea what we're talking about.
And next, Ventura County Supervisor Jeff Guerello is here. Hello, Jeff.
Hello. Good to see you. Good to see you, my friend. Thank you, you too, you too. Mr. Mayor, member of the councils, I just want to say thank you very much for the opportunity to join the chorus of voices to recognize Mayor McNamee's term as mayor of this fine city. I had an opportunity to work with you on a number of occasions and on some big projects, and we would meet at the coffee shop, and I got to tell you, I don't know anyone that's got as much energy as Kevin McNamee. He's on fire, but he truly loves this city and has helped guide this city as mayor through an amazing year. We saw a glimpse of the success earlier today at the state of the city. It was a fantastic presentation, and congratulations for everything that you've been able to do. In addition to some of the things were mentioned earlier for the success of the city, you've also passed the general plan, which hasn't been done since 1970. You made bringing a family justice center to Thousand Oaks a top priority, as well as more county services, which I look forward to work, continuing our work together on those important issues. You're instrumental in bringing a Hilton Hotel to the Jan's Marketplace, which we're still working on to try to resolve some of this region's much-needed kind of need for accommodations, and instrumental in obtaining a state grant of $5.8 million for the first homelessness shelter in Thousand Oaks. The city of Thousand Oaks has a reputation as being forward-leaning on the important issues of the day, of public safety, of homelessness, of housing. It is an innovative, forward-leaning city, and that's a credit to all of you, but certainly to you, Mayor, through this term. And I want to present to you today a commendation from the Board of Supervisors on behalf of the county of Ventura, but particularly the 2nd District, in recognition of your achievements as mayor. And I also want to present to you, if I may, this challenge coin, or called a command coin. On one side is the seal of the County of Ventura, 2nd District Supervisor, and on the other side is United States Navy and Indo-PACOM and my command that I have in the military, and it's kind of the two sides of the coin. But they call it a challenge coin because the history goes back to World War II with pilots, and they would present a coin, and then if you would see that person again, I'll give it to you now.
Mine.
It is yours now, and thank you. If you see that person again, and they don't have the coin on them, you have to buy me a beer. So that's the history of that challenge coin. So I'm going to be following you around town now, and it's going to be a little odd, but I'm going to make sure you have that coin with you. But again, on behalf of the county of Ventura, on behalf of the safest large city, excuse me, safest large county in California, doing really strong part to Thousand Oaks being one of the safest cities in the state and in the United States, I just wanted to say thank you and congratulations, and look forward to continuing to work with you.
Thank you, my friend. Appreciate it. Thank you. Picture together.
All right, now we have the Executive Director of the Greater Caneo Valley Chamber of Commerce, Danielle Borja, with us this evening. Here she comes.
Long time no see, Mayor. Our chamber is really grateful for your engagement supporting our local businesses over this past year. We started the year with Civic Leaders Breakfast, with some bantering with some neighboring mayor cities. You were a fixture at our ribbon-cutting ceremonies this year for small businesses like Woodworkers Retreats, Slice House, and relocations like Ningio and Connecticut, along with nonprofits like Gold Coast Veterans. I didn't go back in count, but I'm pretty sure it was over 20 this year. We saw Mayor McNamee at quite a few, and they really just appreciated his presence and being seen, especially our new businesses that are opening in town that have put so much heart and soul into getting their doors open. And he always came prepared. He did his research, he knew about the business, he spoke to them specifically, and I know that they really appreciated that. We got many comments related to that. At your urging, we created Elevate Caneo Valley, specifically around educational support for our small businesses and potential entrepreneurs coming into our community with our cohort of 18 businesses to start this first year and will continue into 2024. And we're also grateful for the dialogue around a variety of really important policy issues that affected our business community this year, from expanded outdoor dining, inclusionary housing, the hotel, housing projects, and the general plan. And so on behalf of our businesses, our Board of Directors, and our team, we appreciate your leadership this year and look forward to a partnership in 2024.
Just as a quick plug, Mayor, if I may, the chamber has put on this incredible seminar series for those that want to open a business or currently have a business in Thousand Oaks to take it to the next level or open their doors. So Danielle's here, can answer questions about that, but if you know of anyone who wishes to open a business, they've got a seminar series to help support them on aspects of running a business. Thank you, Mayor. Pro Temp.
Okay, next up, the President of the Thousand Oaks Boulevard Association, Sean Maradian.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone, Sean Maradian. It's a pleasure to be before you and Mayor McNamee. We're absolutely grateful for your leadership this year. I'll never forget when Mr. McNamee became mayor, I got a call one day, said, I want to run something by you. Heard of LPRs, I said, no? He goes, I'm working on a project, and we're looking for the business community's support to make this community safer. I said, we're interested. Successful, he was able to achieve that, and we were able to support that. Then a few months goes by, he goes, hey, do you have a moment for a call? I said, sure. He goes, I want to run something by you, I'm doing a focus group. I said, really on what? He goes, how to make it more efficient to do business in town. Are you interested in that? I said, of course we are, thank you. We get together for a focus group, and then he goes, hey, do you want to make housing more affordable here? We goes, who doesn't? He goes, are you interested for a call? I said, absolutely. And the theme of proactive leadership throughout your mayoral term went on and on and on, from every single aspect of everything that is near and dear to those of us on Thousand Oaks Boulevard, to deal with small businesses, deal with permitting, deal with entitlements, deal with city staff on a regular basis, and every single turn, before I could go to him and say, hey, can you help us? He would come to us and say, how can we help you? I mean, I couldn't ask for a greater mayor this last year, and we're beyond grateful. And the accomplishments that we've achieved, whether it was the LPRs, whether it was the general plan, whether it was getting the focus group together to give feedback to staff to make everything we do that much easier, was absolutely a breath of fresh air, and we are forever grateful. We echo a lot of the things we've heard here this evening, and on behalf of our Board of Directors, and on behalf of 300 property owners and three and a half miles of Thousand Oaks Boulevard, we as well would like to present you with a plaque that says, "In appreciation and recognition of your leadership and support to the Boulevard. We're grateful and we love you."
Thank you, my friend. Thank you.
Thank you, Sean. Chair of the Caneo Rec and Park District, George Lang.
For those of you who don't know, this is Jim Friedel, the Director of our Recreation and Parks. Big hand for him, please.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and special council members. I'm George Lang. It's my honor to be the Chair of the Caneo Recreation and Park District, representing our Board of Directors, and this evening with me is Director Doug Nichols, and as already mentioned, our General Manager, Jim Friedel. And we appreciate your proactive activities and suggestions. In fact, even before this evening's meeting, Kevin got ahold of me and shared a couple new ideas about the access to Wildwood Regional Park and so forth, and he's already spoken with Director Nichols, and Doug and I rode here together, and so on our way home, I'm sure we're going to talk about your suggestion. But not only are we involved and active here in the community, but we also are involved and active at a higher level. Doug Nichols is the current President of the California Association of Recreation and Park Districts, which covers the whole state. I happen to be involved, currently Chair of the Mountains Recreation and Conservation Authority, and we have about 90,000 acres, all the way from Orange County, Riverside County, LA County, Ventura County, et cetera. And when we go to meetings, we're able to share information about Thousand Oaks, about the Caneo Valley, and how much, you know, we are blessed where we live. And Jeff Guerell is also, I knew him when he was an Assemblymember. I've been around a long time. Anyway, when we're in other parts of the state, we proudly talk about the Caneo Valley, the city of Thousand Oaks. So people around know about us, and when we tell them about our programs at the park district and what the city's doing and so forth, they're in awe, pretty much unbelievable of what we as a community accomplish. And that's what's very special. I've been here since 1965, and I've seen a lot of changes here, but as we know and see and enjoy, those changes are positive, and it's just a pleasure to be able to represent the city of Thousand Oaks, Caneo Valley. And I would also like to ask our board member, oh, here it is, to present a mayor with a token of the Caneo Recreation and Park District's appreciation of what you've accomplished in your representation. It's something that we believe that you can utilize, and especially in the series, and I'm not sure who created the idea of concerts, but it's a great idea, and this is something, Kevin, that you can take with you to those city concerts, and also to, there you go, and also to the summer concerts in the park that the park district has. So proudly utilize, when you open it, you'll see all kinds of things in there, but proudly utilize that and appreciate the part of the community that you have created and guided, and this is last year. So thank you so much, and God bless.
Thank you, sir. Much appreciated. Thank you, sir.
Oh, and I mentioned, I mentioned to Rick, you know, I just kind of noticed, I got a gimp, and I have a chair up there, and a couple people said, well, why don't you just sit in the front row? And I said, no, it's an honor to be able to have a chair dedicated to yourself and to be able to sit in it. So I'm going to trudge back up there and enjoy this evening. God bless.
Thank you, George. And now we have a former mayor and very luminous member of our community, Chuck Cohen. Luminous.
Thank you, gentlemen. I think that, for me, this last year, I have found Mayor McNamee to exemplify the qualities of mayor in this town. I come here to represent the 58 former mayors, who I have not polled for this honor, to provide the traditional Ed Jones Mayor Cup to Mayor Kevin McNamee. He has broken the mold on many occasions, and I think he will continue to do so in looking for new ways to make Thousand Oaks even better and more serving to its public. Thank you.
Would you like to get that picture now, Mayor?
That would be excellent. Let's do it, sir. Tell you what, I'll just leave the certificates here, and we'll just all come on out. Chuck, come on out, we're going to do a photograph with you. Yeah, we could do that. We could do that. Presenters could hold it, that'd be great. Thank you, sir, appreciate that. Thank you.
Chuck's got to hold his cup.
Cup's got, Chuck, you got to hold your cup.
I got to hold the cup.
Yes, sir.
Come on back to the podium.
Yes, sir, I'm back.
Now, we have our city manager, Drew Powers, would like to say a few words.
Thanks so much. Kevin, we've worked so closely together this year. It's become a tradition that our executive leadership team likes to do something to acknowledge the outgoing mayor, and I don't think many folks really understand, when you step into the role of mayor, the additional responsibilities that are layered on top of that, the production schedule of putting on a meeting like this every two weeks, and then to do so with so many consequential items in front of us, to, as I shared with Kevin, to have the honor of being the mayor the year that the general plan the first time is updated since 1970, but also having to overcome hurdles during the year, like redistricting that came forward during that period of time, and doing so in a nimble fashion. We spoke frequently, kept, you know, kept him.
Come on back to the podium.
Yes, sir, I'm back.
Now, we have our City Manager, Drew Powers, who'd like to say a few words.
Thanks so much, Kevin. We've worked so closely together this year. It's become a tradition that our executive leadership team likes to do something to acknowledge the outgoing mayor. And I don't think many folks really understand, when you step into the role of mayor, the additional responsibilities that are layered on top of that. The production schedule of putting on a meeting like this every two weeks, and then to do so with so many consequential items in front of us, to, as I shared with Kevin, to have the honor of being the mayor the year that the general plan the first time is updated since 1970. But also having to overcome hurdles during the year, like redistricting, that came forward during that period of time. And doing so in a nimble fashion. We spoke frequently, kept him apprised of everything that was going on, filled with ideas. Kevin and I talk ideas often. And Danielle mentioned it, but the level of commitment to going to community functions and events, that's one of the biggest requirements of the mayor. And Kevin did that in spades throughout the year. And from chamber openings to Boy Scout activities, to functions around town, to representing us on economic development panels in various settings. I think my favorite chamber function of the year, though, was the Brown's Top Shelf Meat opening, where we got a barbecue afterwards. And I've been frequenting that ever since. I just... It's been a pleasure to work with you. We have gotten together and found what we think will be a great way to spend some of that extra free time next year, now that you're not mayor and enjoying one of our fine new local establishments. Thanks for everything.
So, anyone who's mayor needs to have their term memorialized. Is that the right word?
Sounds good.
I think so. And to give you something to remember this year by. And, you know, it's a big deal to be mayor of the city of Thousand Oaks. I know, I've been there once or twice myself. So in order to do just that, we would like to present you with a plaque, of course, which is traditional. You can see, everyone sees the plaque. But, oh, thank you. But we have one thing a little bit nicer, I think.
Would you hold this, please? Yes, sir.
Beautiful crystal memento here that recognizes your mayorship from December of '22 to December of '23. He said, "Should we... What size should we ask get?" I said, "Go big. Big one. Go big or go home." So it's a beautiful piece.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate that.
Prominent spot in your home.
My wife takes care of that. Thank you.
Okay.
Excellent. Thank you.
Right, one more. Bob, you want to come on down for a minute? Everybody knows Bob Engler, don't they?
Yes.
Yeah, there you go. That's better.
As the council also generally wants to reward the mayor for all the work that you've done. And having been at many events with the mayor over the year, I've noticed that you do like to eat. I was gonna make you an honorary fireman, but I thought a better way to do it was to get you a nice gift certificate to one of our finer restaurants in town, so you and your lovely wife can enjoy your free time.
Well, thank you, sir. That's wonderful. Thank you.
So, now we'll take a moment and hear some remarks from... Where's Kevin? There he is. From our fellow council members about our mayor. And perhaps I might start, if that's all right with everyone. Kevin, I liked your State of the City speech today. It was very good.
Thank you.
Very, very, very good. Especially the part with the young girl that wanted to be mayor. That was very nice.
Thank you.
I thought you did a great job. And, yeah, this was a very productive year, but it took a lot of mayoring to make that happen. We had some pretty big issues that faced us. Districting, the general plan, we had a lot of speakers, and you handled it quite well, I must say.
Thank you.
You really did. You kept the meeting running. You were respectful to the audience. They followed your orders, which was quite good.
Different than at home.
They behaved themselves, and I really gotta give you credit for that. And I'll just say one other thing, as everyone knows, we passed the general plan. The 1970 general plan is signed by the mayor, Charles W. Cohen, who's sitting right there. Now, this year's 2023 general plan will be signed by you, Mayor Kevin McNamee. So you will go down in history as the signing mayor of a very, very important document.
So in another 50 years, I get to sit in the audience where Chuck is and say hi to whoever's signing it at that time?
Yes, you will. And Chuck will be right there with you.
I love it.
That's right. Anyway, who'd like to go next? David.
Thank you, Mayor Protown. Mayor, Mr. Mayor, can say that for a few more minutes? You know, it's no secret that you and I have had our differences. I don't want to dwell on that tonight. I want to dwell on two of the happiest moments of the past year, where we all worked together for the common good. One was at... We electeds go to a lot of charity functions, and there were fundraisers. I forget whether it was senior concerns or maybe community conscience. So I want everyone here to donate all you can to both organizations, because they're both wonderful. But we were at the preliminaries for one. There was a silent auction, and Councilmember Engler is a very talented woodworker, and he donated a bowl to one of these silent auctions. And it was the opening, and I think the opening bid was something like $50, and no one had bid on it. And the council members were walking around, and we saw that there were no bids on this. And all of a sudden, I felt someone poking me in the ribs and saying in a loud enough voice for everyone to hear, "My, what a lovely bowl. This is incredibly well-made." And poked me some more, and I said, "I got it." And said, "Wow, the workmanship on this is unbelievable." And two people rushed over and put a bid. And then another crowd came up, and... But I should have mentioned, this is Catherine McNamee, who is plugging Bob's craftsmanship, and said, "Can you believe that wood? It's incredible that they could turn this wood into something else." And then another couple came up and placed a bid. And this repeated two or three more times. We went from something like $50 to close to $500 for this bowl, all in the community good. And that wouldn't have happened if we weren't there to do that. The other happy story I want to mention is an official one, and this was at our council meeting on September 12th of this year, where we had two hearings, and they were very different sets of residents with very different concerns. One were seniors in Imola Home Park, who were very concerned that some of them had a quite real fear of being turned out and facing possible homelessness. The other group were the residents of Development in Newbury Park, who were unhappy with a decision that may have resulted in... This is my word, not staff's word, but carpet bombing a neighborhood with stop signs on something like 10 or 11 cul-de-sacs. And in both cases, the residents were saying things like, "We're not being heard. You're not working... You know, you're not hearing us. You're not improving our quality of life." In both cases, Mayor McNamee led unanimous 5-0 votes, and we took care of those folks. And that's what we do here. We serve the public. We serve all residents, not just the most influential residents, but all residents. And to me, that's when government works at its very best, is when we serve everyone. So Mayor, for running meetings smoothly, as others have acknowledged, and for your role in serving all of our residents, I want to thank you for that. Thank you.
I really don't hire shills in the audience by my bowls that are being bid on. I really don't pay for people to do that. But I'm glad it happened. Thank you. When... Being a mayor in our town is... You think it's easy to do. What do we do? We just sit up here and we bang a gavel a few times. But it's actually a pretty difficult job. You have a lot of people who want to talk. You have a lot of things going on. There's people... Now we have people on the computer. We have people in the audience, trying to keep it all straight, make sure we don't miss somebody. Kevin had never done that before. The mayor had never done this type of thing before. So when he first started a year or so ago, it was a little rough. I remember the first time he banged the gavel, and the city attorney and I went, "Oh, gosh."
I am so sorry. I really am so sorry.
It was so loud that we both looked at each other. We promptly went and filed a comp claim that night. Because of the improvements you've had over the years, I'm gonna name you the most improved mayor that I've seen so far. You have done a great job of not only, you know, not banging the gavel so loud, but also just the way you have handled the citizens, how you've invited them down to speak, how you've brought humor to some of the things that they have said and got people to relax. Those of you who have never spoken at the podium, it is nerve-wracking. The mayor, through his humor, has been able to diffuse some of that anxiety. And finally, I think that I and perhaps some of the other council members can pretty much tell you when 15 seconds is up. Kevin's famous now for 15 seconds. And he's brought that to our dais, and we thank him for that.
Thank you, Bob.
All right. So we had a, what, about six weeks, Mr. Newman and myself, when we ended the campaign and we knew that we were gonna be elected, but we hadn't had our first meeting. I remember getting kind of the debrief on Al and Kevin and Bob. And the three things I remember is, for Bob, he is active. He is doing as much as humanly possible to help the community. Sits on a whole bunch of boards, or he's involved in basically everything. That was true. Al, what I was told about Al is that I'm gonna like Al, because we have a lot in common. We're both kind of in the financial industry. We really like business, and we're gonna have great conversation. And then what I heard about Kevin is, he is... His energy is unlike anyone's. And as the, you know, new guy, I'm like, "All right, we'll see." I'm tired. I am so tired.
Bring it on.
Yeah, well, well done there. So I just wanted to tell all of you, and David, just getting to know you as well, I'm very thankful to be able to get through this first year with you guys. It's been a great pleasure. Kevin, one thing I love seeing is people in the leadership role. I love seeing kind of, not only the fact that they're stepping up, but how they go about it. And I have to actually 100% agree with Bob. The leader that you were in the beginning versus the leader you were at the end are almost unrecognizable. Your speech today, I thought, was a 10. It was absolutely phenomenal. And seeing you grow into that role, I was blessed to be able to watch from the side. So I appreciate everything you've done. We had some key votes where you needed a leader that was gonna be a little bit more stern, and I think you were the right guy for this time. So I appreciate you and thank you.
Thank you, Mikey. And finally, our mayor.
Gentlemen, it has been a pleasure working with you on the City Council this year. Yes, we had some incredibly difficult and monumental issues that came before our council. I would like to say the best part about this council, ladies and gentlemen, is that they bring in a very diverse background to the decision-making of the issues that face our city. Frequently, we are navigating what Sacramento and Washington throws our way. And the talented men, and if Tracy was here, I'd say a woman, who helped guide us through that process, is truly an amazing process. And as I use this saying in leadership, "Let the horses run. Don't hold them back." And our five council members here, myself included, let them run, because their talents will come forth, and we saw that at our council meetings. We all disagree and we all agree. We all have different visions, but in the end of the day, we all want to do what's best for the city. And ultimately, it's through the leadership of our city manager, Drew Powers, our city attorney, who always says, when I ask her a legal question, the answer is, "Kevin, it depends." Guaranteed every time. And no, you can't do that. Why not, Tracy? But because of she and Drew's ability to help us navigate, we did a hell of a lot of good things here in the city. I'd like to make a comment, though, about a few things. Some of you may not know some hidden talents by Mr. Newman, who, as we were back in Washington, DC in March, lobbying on behalf of the city with our senators and our congress representatives and other people there on legislation. You will never find a better trivia tourist, tour guide, than David Newman. David, you're phenomenal. How did you learn so much about Washington, DC?
I went to high school there.
Oh. So any of you need tips on Washington, DC on a tour, see that man. He is phenomenal. When he retires, there's a career waiting for him. I can say honestly, Bob and Al were terrific mentors for me as I took on the mayorship first time for me, but these gentlemen help were great role models, directing me on how to not hit the gavel so hard. And I'm so sorry, Drew, but it was loud. I have to admit, my ears were ringing, and thank you for not filing the work comp claim. That said, again, your leadership and your experience has been truly valuable to me, Al, Bob. Mikey, I feel very kindred spirit to you. Ideas, I love kicking them by you, because we have many challenges facing the city. And the, as I refer to as the lazy policymaker, will want to take money from one end of government and move it over to another to address that issue. The challenge is finding a creative way of addressing those issues without raising taxes on the people, because I feel it's best that we leave money in your pocket to spend the way you want, not the way we up here want to spend it. Because outside of what government does best, no one can deliver a product or service more efficiently than the private sector, and that's all of you. So I love talking to Mikey about creative ideas, how to address solutions. Ideas pop. It's just a matter of pulling concepts together, resources together. And many of you here in the audience, I've tapped on the shoulder and said, "What do you think of this idea?" And some have come forward and actually have been tremendous. Others still in the works, and some are yet to come. But between Mikey, Al, Bob, David, thank you, gentlemen, my mission was to allow all of you, as well as the public, to be heard at every meeting, because everyone's voices are so important in this process. And because of you sharing your voices from the public to us helps guide us as far as what we should do right, to David's point, to do what's right for the city and what the people want. It's been my honor to have been your 59th mayor here. I'm very honored to have the mayor from 1970, Chuck Cohen, who signed the first draft or first actually planning for our city, and I'm gonna be putting my signature on the next. So with that, I'm looking at my script right now to figure out where we're going with this. Back to me, Mayor. Public comments. Madam Clerk, do we have any public comments?
Yes, sir. This is the time and place for public comments. Speakers are requested to state their name and community of residence for the record. One individual has requested to speak in pursuant to council standards. The speaker is allowed three minutes. The yellow light displays when you have one minute remaining.
For those of you who have never seen my preamble to the public comments section, you're gonna get it here and for the last time. Please direct your comments to the council in general. Don't direct them at anyone specifically. When you have 15 seconds left, you will hear me say softly, "15 seconds," so that way you can close out your thoughts and end right at three minutes. If we had other people, I would have them sit behind, and I will call them up right at the three-minute mark to continue speaking. So with that, who do we have up? Madam Clerk, I'm looking at our list. Oh, Fred! Fred, come on down. If I may, real quick, introduce Fred. First time I met Fred, he's told me a little bit about his background, both in law enforcement as well as with the Secret Service in Washington. And he pulls out a photo of, "If you want a cush job, become a Secret Service agent." He's there in a pool swimming with President Ronald Reagan. Fred, what a great job to have. I'm sure you worked, but to swim with the president in the pool, that's a great place to be. Fred, it's a pleasure to... Fred, it's a pleasure to have you here, sir. You've got three minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Fred Fukunaga, 27-year homeowner and resident of Thousand Oaks. After last week's contentious meeting, it prompted me to come here again and say, before I got cut off like last time, "Thank you. Thank you to you, the city council." It's easy for people like me to come up here and say whatever we do, make comments one way or the other. But you're the one stuck with the heavy lifting and the hard decisions, and at last week's meeting proved that. Whether or not we wanted what we wanted, either way, I know that all of you came to your conclusions and your votes after giving it heavy thought and in good conscience and doing what's best for the city. So I thank you. We are blessed to have you. In particular, Mayor McNamee, I really appreciate your leadership, your energy, and taking the time to listen to people, even me. So thank you. To the city staff, we again are blessed. I've said it before, and I'll say it again. In 27 years, I have never, ever met a city employee that wasn't courteous and conscientious. Never. And I've dealt with some of the city staff here. It's been an honor. What a hard-working, dedicated group of people. I'm just overwhelmed that I live in a city that I'm proud to be a citizen of and to live in a city where the city government employees are dedicated, work hard, and make it sure that we live in a city that's safe. And again, to Chief Paris and Fire Chief Shea, to keep... Thank you to your men and women for keeping us safe. And so thank you for a city that's well-run, fiscally prudent, and one that's proud to be called our city. Thank you so much. Happy Christmas, and thank you.
Thank you, Fred. To Fred's thoughts, again, I think the strength of our city is that we take care of our family, look after our neighbor, and we care so very much about our community. And it's all of you is the reason why Thousand Oaks is the gem of California, as I often like to refer to it. This is why the people from other cities, Los Angeles specifically, wants to come live here in Thousand Oaks. Our city staff is the foundation upon which the city has done so well. And yes, you look at us as council members and mayor, it's not us. It's our wonderful city staff and the leadership we have with our city attorney and city manager. And with that, it's now time for the 2023 council reorganization. I'll now turn the meeting over to Laura, our city clerk. And I'd like to say, Laura, it has been an absolute pleasure this last year for you keeping me on track and working with you. You're an absolute delight. Thank you so much. So you're gonna conduct the nomination and selection of both mayor and mayor pro tem. Is that correct?
Yes, sir. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Excellent. You've got the controls.
So nominations are now open for the office of mayor. Councilmember Newman.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I'd like to place into nomination for mayor for the next year, Councilmember Al Adam.
Mayor Pro Tem Al Adam has been nominated. Are there any other nominations? Hearing none, nominations are declared closed. Mayor Pro Tem Al Adam has been nominated to serve as mayor until December 2024. I'll conduct a roll call vote. Councilmember Engler?
Yes.
Councilmember Newman?
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Adam?
Yes.
And Mayor McNamee?
Yes.
And that motion passes 5 to 0. And now the nominations for the office of mayor pro tem are open.
I'd like to nominate David Newman.
Alrighty, let me save and close. So Councilmember Newman has been nominated. Are there any other nominations? Hearing none, nominations are declared closed. One moment, please. Councilmember Engler?
Yes.
Councilmember Newman?
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor?
Yes.
Mayor Adam?
Yes.
Councilmember McNamee?
Yes.
And that motion passes 5 to 0. And let's go ahead and change positions on the dais, please.
Hi, Mikey. Way to go. Okay. Thank you. Well, they say third time's the charm. And this is my third time. See if I can get it right this time. I was the COVID mayor two or three years back. I don't remember exactly when. That was rough. Ended up filming videos. My kids would take videos of me in my front yard, and we'd send them to the city. And I'd give updates on what was happening around the community because we couldn't get together. Anyway, we're beyond that. Thank you. Anyway, I want to thank the staff first and foremost. Drew, Tracy, the whole E-Team, everybody that works for the city. You know, we set the policy, but you make it happen. And I have extreme gratitude for that. I want to thank my fellow city council members. We're all working well together. It's great. I want to thank my wife Marilyn, who... She deserves applause, yes. Yes. It's been a long haul, hasn't it, Marilyn? A long haul. I want to thank you for being there when I come home after these meetings. I tell you. Anyway, you're great, huh? Really appreciate it. So, you know, we're gonna continue to honor our past like we always do here in the city, but we're gonna plan for the future. We just adopted the general plan that's gonna give us a nice plan. We got some big things coming up in 2024. We're looking at building up our bioscience hub. We're looking at expanding the Janes Mall. We're looking at our downtown master plan, some modular housing for homeless folks. I do want to take just a minute to talk about something that I think is the biggest challenge this city's facing. And I've been here since 1977, so I've been around a while. And yet, in my opinion, it's making room for the next generation in this city. And when I got here in '77, the median age was around 22. Here we are, whatever, 40-plus years later, the median age is 44. So we are definitely an aging city. I was at the State of the City, obviously, today. I was talking to somebody from Cal Lu, and they were talking about the Ram staff. I said, "Oh, a lot of them live here in the city, right?" They said, "Well, actually, we see older Ram staff moving to Thousand Oaks, but younger Ram staff leaving Thousand Oaks." So we've got this outmigration of younger people that I think we've got to face up to and deal with. I went to the opening of Crawford's, Crawford Social, just opened up in Westlake last Friday. They hired 150 young people here in town. Mostly kids from Westlake High School, Moor Park College. Great kids, you know. It's so great that we have a school district that produces these young people. But I was thinking to myself, "How many of these kids are gonna be here three, four, or five years from now? How many are gonna stay, or how many are gonna move to Santa Monica or the San Fernando Valley or wherever?" It's really important that this city provides the things to keep young people here, the talent that we need to operate these businesses that are so important. And here's what it's gonna take: jobs, housing, and things to do. Amenities, places for kids to gather and socialize. And when I say kids, I don't necessarily mean teenagers, but people in their 20s and 30s. You know, they want to have an experience. They want to... And we're making progress. We're absolutely making progress. T.O. Ranch, the old Kmart site, 50 affordable units, commercial in the front. Santal, $299 on the boulevard, affordable units there with some great restaurants opening. Tarantula Hill, the community gathering place. The place is packed. It's been a big hit. Crawford's that I just mentioned. I think that's gonna be a big social gathering place. We've approved 1,000 infill units of housing here in this city in the last couple of years, thanks to my fellow council members and our staff. And about 120 of those have been affordable. So we're... Oh, and we also, on Hillcrest, we have 78 units coming that are affordable for sale. So we're trying to open those doors and keep young people here or invite them back. You know, it's really important. Companies like Amgen needs to recruit and retain, and this is one way to do it, to have a city that builds the kind of things that young people are looking for. And the biggest thing coming in my mind is the downtown master plan. This is crucial to the city. Crucial. We need to rebuild this downtown. It's been great, but it needs a redo. And we're working really hard on that. We're gonna create a vibrant heart of the city, maybe some nightlife, bring in some people. And I mean just all young people, young and old alike, but we need a downtown center. And we're gonna work on that. So I think the future of the city depends on this. And you know, I'm a baby boomer, so right on and far out, right? I'm part of that groovy generation, right? Out of sight, right, Bob? Or it's all out of sight. But, you know, we... We boomers aren't gonna be around forever, let me tell you, although my kids think I will be. So we have to adapt. We have to change. And we are doing so. And it's a great change for the city. And it's crucial to the future of the city. I really believe... This is a special place. It's an aspirational community. People want to be here. They want to live in Thousand Oaks. And we can have the best of all worlds. We can have our open space. We can have our neighborhoods. And we can have some amenities and some experiences for young and old alike. And we're heading in that direction. And I think it's really important to the future of the city, and I want to see us concentrate on that in 2024. Everybody in this audience, you're all active community members. I know you're gonna help us out with that, so... And now, I think we're gonna go to Mayor Pro Tem next. Where is he? Oh, there he is. There's David.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor Adam. And thank you all for being here. I want to echo the comments many have made tonight, that yes, we set policy, but others implement it. And we are here as your public servants. We work for all of you. And job one for everyone in city government is to ensure the safety and well-being of everyone here. And well-being, I can't improve on the things that Mayor Adam just articulated. There's a lot to that. There's a lot more to that, obviously. Maybe I'll put a bit more color then on the public safety aspect of it. One of the joys of serving on council this year is working with our public safety people. Chief Paris is here, and I've learned a lot from him. I've learned that we're incredibly lucky to have such competent and excellent police work here in the hall. And one of the most interesting things Chief Paris said to me at our very first meeting is when he was in the academy, he learned that about public safety is, of course, preventing actual crime from happening. Of course, that's part of the job, but that's not the whole job. It's also ensuring that the public feels safe. And that has many different dimensions. I mean, some of it is what all of us would think of as standard police work. But it goes beyond that. You know, it's when there are controversial topics or when there's unease in the community, it's doing outreach. It has to do with traffic, is some of the building projects that Al was mentioning. People, those are gonna succeed or fail depending on whether people feel safe going there. So there are traffic aspects to that. So there's a public safety aspect to that. There's a public safety aspect to housing, to parks, you name it. Any aspect of things we do, there is a public safety aspect to it. It doesn't mean the police are everywhere. Some of this has nothing to do with the police. But we are incredibly lucky to live in one of the safest places anywhere. One of the most beautiful places also. But on the safest part, that didn't happen by accident. That's because there's a commitment by this council and this staff and our partners in police and fire and many, many others to ensure that we have good quality of life here, and we keep it that way. So former Mayor Cohen mentioned he'd come here in, I think, 1965? Or, I'm sorry, George Lang did. Sorry. Got my veterans mixed up. I haven't been here quite that long, although I did visit here in 1966. And, you know, then is now, beautiful, safe place. Whatever we do, and there's a lot to do, but we need to work to keep it that way. And I join with everyone else here in being grateful to our staff and to our residents. And yes, we need to change, but we also need to preserve the beauty and the safety of this area. Thank you, Mayor.
Mayor Pro Tem, Councilmember Taylor.
So I've lived here basically my whole life. I grew up in Oak Park. My parents moved here when Dos Santos was developed. I've been here ever since. And I had a very high expectation for how this city was ran because there was a reason why I never left. And I can honestly say now, after this last year, the bar in which I held them at, they were actually much higher than I even realized. So this has been an absolute blessing working with all of you. I'm very, very thankful for you. On, you know, on what Mayor Adams said, like, I feel this because it's the exact opposite of what I'm experiencing. My parents are here. My wife's parents are here. Her brothers are here. My sister's here. All our grandkids are here. I'm living the experience of a magical small town, and I love that. And part of the reason why I wanted to run for city council is because I liked the idea of trying to have my kids experience that as well, my kids growing up and not leaving. And the truth is, we do have a gap here. You know, from 20 to 40, you know, most of my friends left when I decided to stay. I would love to see that trend turn around. I actually couldn't agree with you more. And I'm honored to be able to, you know, hopefully participate in that over the next three years. So thank you all for everything you do. I'm truly humbled to be in this position that I am.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember McNamee.
Thank you, Mayor. I am just truly blessed to be able to sit in this seat and to help problem-solve for the challenges that face our city. We have come a long way in this city, and the upward trajectory will continue. I want to address the areas of the homeless, housing affordability, water sustainability, and reuse. There's a lot of things that need to be addressed, and with the talented council members I have here, our talented city staff and managers, I think we have a terrific, terrific 2024 coming towards us. And I'm very, very optimistic. As I said at my State of the City address today, I am so very proud of our city, so very proud of all aspects of it, and look forward to being a part of that in the future. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Engler.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for pointing out that we're co-boomers here. Thank you so much for that. The nice thing about that, though, is that you have a lot of experience in this council. I'm into it now for five, almost six years. We are bringing a little bit of experience to the council, which is, helps to guide the city because we recognize that we stand on the shoulders of those who came before us. And we need to honor the path that they laid for us as well as go forward into the future. There's always two kinds of people. There's people who look at the glass half-ept, half-full. I can't help but look at our glass as half-full. We are on the verge of really making some great progress, that we can address some of the issues that you brought forward. Having that sense of place that we've been searching for for a number of years through various ways that the city has tried to address that. And I'm hoping that this year, we can really make some progress and move the city toward what our founders really saw. So thank you for the chance to make a few comments.
Thank you, Councilmember Engler. And thank you all for being here this evening. That concludes our reorganization, and I hope you'll join us for reception here in the lobby. And with that, we will adjourn.